Good evening. I'm going to call to order the May 9th meeting of the Esquad City Council's Services and Safety Committee. My name is Chris Ray. I will be the chair this evening. With me are Councilmember Mariah Batiste and Councilmember Victoria Hunt. We have five agenda items for us today. We have Agenda Bill 7595, which is an amendment to the salary ordinance. We have Agenda Bill 7565, which is an inter-fund loan extension for the roadway improvement. Agenda Bill 7596, property tax reduction request via King County's Public Benefit Rating System. Agenda Bill 7601, Eastside Fire and Rescue Memorandum of Understanding. And finally, we have an update on the 2019-2020 applications for human services grant funding. So with that, we'll start with City Administrator Emily Moon to talk about Agenda Bill 7595.
Thank you very much. I will just be brief. Actually, I am going to just present on one of the two titles. It's being recommended, and I'll be very brief. The title that we'd like to add to the pay plan, the list of classifications, is Management Analyst. This is a position or part-time positions that you have authorized and provided funding for in April. Establishing the title just allows me to go ahead and fill those positions with that title and the accompanying pay range. The alternative is, as I already have the funding approved from council and I'm already out recruiting, is that I would have to use a different existing title with the same pay range just to fill the spots. So that's what I've proposed.
Okay.
All right. Any?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
You're free.
Fantastic. And Jen can cover the second.
Who's going to do the other one?
Yep.
All right.
Good evening. The second request in the change in the pay plans comes from the departure of an existing or a former employee. This was a risk management officer. And so while we were looking at filling significant gaps in the way that we do contract management, risk management, we had an opportunity to find a different classification, which you see as the Contractor and Procurement Specialist, because a significant amount of work on the contract management side of the risk management officer's responsibilities were for contracting. And so we have a need in the organization to make improvements in our purchasing, all of our purchasing, and I'll call that the umbrella. And so this is why we've proposed a new classification to our pay plans so that we can fill a need. We have the funding because we had, this position was a budgeted position. The FTE is essentially just going to be reallocated to the proposed new job classification. So that is what I have.
Any questions? Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Does the risk management officer position, that will remain as a position, but that will be unfilled?
So those roles and responsibilities are being spread out through existing finance team members. So for example, some of the claims management, things of that nature are coming in through my office, and then we're tackling that with the finance team, as well as working with shared services, which are assisting with taking on some of that role and the exec office as well. So the position would essentially not be filled as the risk management officer.
Any questions? I just have one. I think it's a follow-on to where Councilmember Hunt was going. So we have a classification for a risk manager, and we're going to keep that.
That would stay, yes.
We're just not going to fill it.
Correct.
And the compensation is comparable between the two positions?
It is comparable. There would be no impact to the budget, and so we don't see any issues from a spending side of things.
So one last question, and I think this might go back to Administrator Moon if we need to or we want to. So what process did we? Two questions. One, for the management analyst, the compensation range is consistent with what we projected in the budget amount we already did?
Yes.
Or the allocation we already made? Okay. And then in terms of how we went about establishing what the compensation rate should be, is there? And this is just because I don't know what's the process we go through on that?
Sure. This was the process that we use for both positions. So typically, when we need to add a title, we go and do some market analysis. We look at our comparable cities. If there are public comps, we look at private market, too, if we need to, for private comparisons. And we look at the min and max of those salary ranges and what the hiring range should be in order to attract and retain qualified candidates.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Councilmember Hunt.
With the risk management position, the other, there wouldn't be another position that would also be, because the risk management position is not exactly the same as the contractor procurement, so those other tasks, they would not become another position. They're just being spread out amongst the existing position titles.
Yeah. I want to be really transparent about that, and Jen and I have talked about this, and she can add her two cents as well. Right now, we think the workload, at least for the short term, is manageable by the current staffing level that we have. I think we want to examine those duties that were the classic traditional risk management duties and see if there are pieces that we can, on an ongoing basis, keep with our existing staff. There are different levels of duty, so there are some very, how do I say this, kind of rote tasks that are more administrative, that might be easier ones for us to absorb because they're not so time-consuming, they don't require a high level of expertise. And then there might be some pieces that we think we're not able to satisfy, either from time constraints or, again, from our expertise. And those are the pieces that we're going to continue to examine over the remaining months of 2018 and look at ways that we might satisfy those needs. That could be a future position, but as you've heard, we don't anticipate that portion of the job is a full-time position at this moment. So could we couple it with some of the safety officer tasks that are being done throughout the organization and round out a position? That's maybe a possibility. I think another possibility is we have contemplated taking a look at the wide range of legal services that we procure from city attorney's office or elsewhere and thinking about how we might be able to receive those risk management tasks from either our current city attorney or another firm.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Right. Any comments? Councilmember Batiste.
Well, I just took a look through and this, you know, looking at new classifications and what I've read and what we just talked about in terms of the procurement position and contract specialist position makes good sense.
And based on your professional judgment, I mean, the job descriptions, I mean, this is kind of your wheelhouse, look reasonable.
Yeah. I did not have a question.
Okay. Awesome. Anything else? Great. Well, let's, so the question before us is to recommend to the city council to adopt the proposed ordinance changes in creating the new job classifications of management analyst and procurement and contract specialist. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that passes unanimously and no significant issues. Around that, the creation of the job classifications provides flexibility for city staff to fill the open vacancies and does not have any financial impact. So excellent. Thank you. All right. Let's, we'll move on to Agenda Bill 75.
Are we going to forward this to?
Full council.
Full council, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Regular business or consent?
Consent.
Consent? We're going to put it on May 25th consent agenda. Thank you, Teresa. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 75, I was just on such a roll. 7565, inter-fund loan extension for the roadway improvement. Presenting today's Finance Director, Jen Olson.
Thank you. This is what I often term as a housekeeping item. There was an inter-fund loan that was approved by council from the Fleet Fund to the Street Capital Fund or roadway improvements, for roadway improvements. And so what this does is to extend the term of the loan out to the end of 2019, which is what is allowed by law. What we need is additional time in order for us to tackle some of the projects that are in the Street Capital Fund from a cash flow standpoint. So we had a grant that we were not going to be able to receive a little bit later than we anticipated, as well as we had some billing, some credits with the developer based on the development agreement. And so we just had some timing issues with regards to receiving some of those funding sources that were part of the project for the southeast 62nd Street. And so what this loan does is extend the time period. The Fleet Fund is certainly capable of handling a delay in receiving the loan proceeds back. And so what we are asking for is council's approval to extend the loan so that we can correct some billing. We have corrected the billing, but also that we have time then to make those grant reimbursement requests. And so that's what I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Hunt.
This is inter-fund loan, and so is there any cost impact to this proposed delay?
Well, an inter-fund loan or between funds certainly has an interest, so a fund charge is interest, so we have to do that as if we'd gotten a loan. So the rate of interest is based on the LGIP or the local government investment pool, and those rates are about 1.4, 1.5. It changes every month, and so the interest is relatively low, so there is a small impact, but it is not significant, and it's pretty immaterial.
Any other questions? I have just a clarification. So this loan has already been, the inter-fund loan has already been approved by council, and all we're doing here is extending the term of the loan essentially?
That is correct.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Hunt.
So would you be able to quantify the difference with the extension of the loan in terms of the interest that you just mentioned? I know you said it was immaterial, but...
I can add that to the update in the Agenda Bill with regards to a revised amortization schedule and then an additional cost of interest.
Okay. Just, that would be helpful. I would just like to know what the actual cost impact of this is. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Any comments? We are rolling tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Jen. All right. So the question here is to recommend to the full council extending the inter-fund loan repayment date to December 31st, 2019 through the adoption of the proposed ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that passes 3-0. The only outstanding item is to update the Agenda Bill to include estimated additional interest payments between, don't sidetrack me like that.
Sorry.
Between the roadway fund and Fleet Fund. Councilmember Batiste.
I was just going to ask, since we have an addition coming that we haven't seen yet, maybe just in terms of talking about whether this would be on consent or not. So I think typically this might go to consent, but maybe because we have additional information that needs to come to regular business?
I'm going to let Councilmember Hunt opine on this one since it's your request.
I would be okay with it being on consent because it sounds like it's an additional piece of information that likely wouldn't change my, it would not change, I don't think, my opinion on the bill.
So let's move it to council, May 21st meeting on consent agenda, and if for some reason it looks like it needs some further attention, we can pull it down at that time. That's great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Agenda Bill 7596, a property tax reduction request via the King County Public Benefits Rating System. And we have David Faber presenting.
I believe he thinks he's supposed to be here. They were going to be here at 7:00, so we might want to bump.
Okay. We're going to put that on a band for a moment. We'll come back to that one. Okay. Well, let's move on to Agenda Bill 7601, Eastside Fire and Rescue Memorandum of Understanding. And we have, who we have here? We have Jeff Watling. I knew I'd get that right.
Awesome.
Jeff, thank you.
You did. Hey, thank you. It's good to be nimble, right? Yeah, this might be a relatively efficient item as well. So in the fall of last year, the city and staff from Eastside Fire and Rescue began conversations around Station 72. Station 72 is the fire station on Maple Street near the Tibbetts Valley Transit Center. The city constructed that in 2011, and that represents a very energy-efficient facility in that when it was constructed, it included some efficiency systems, some solar panels, a geothermal heating system, and a rain catchment system. Last year, Eastside Fire and Rescue, as they look at all of their buildings that they occupy, owned by multiple cities, they created and looked at a facility standard that tried to understand their baseline capacity for facility maintenance. As they created that standard, Station 72 and some of our energy efficiency systems that are part of that building sort of became an area of focus in that these are systems that often require a higher level of maintenance than is the base service that Eastside Fire and Rescue provides or can provide. So in the series of conversations we had, it was confirmed and also decided, moving forward, that those systems that are pre-existing in Station 72 would remain the responsibility, the maintenance responsibility of Eastside Fire and Rescue, the solar panels, as well as the geothermal system. Both of those systems also represent an energy savings and a revenue savings that are obviously absorbed into the Eastside Fire and Rescue budget as well. We also decided at the time, a post-occupancy analysis was done. The rain catchment system was not working and was, for all intents and purposes, failing, so it was agreed to decommission that system. Along with sort of confirming that Eastside would provide the maintenance for these efficiency systems within Station 72, as we look at building future fire stations, we as a city would be consistent as the other cities in that partnership and in that grouping in that any energy-efficient systems that are created or built into new fire stations that go above this base facility service that Eastside can provide would be the responsibility of the city. So this MOU addresses, like I said, Station 72 and its pre-existing facilities and then sets the stage and the roles and the understanding for new fire stations as they are, as they're built. This was addressed by the, this MOU was addressed by the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board on April 12th and was approved. This is now before us for approval.
Great. Thanks. Any questions? Councilmember Hunt.
The rain catchment, rain-water catchment system to be decommissioned, do you know why it couldn't be fixed?
I'm referring to the post-occupancy evaluation report that was done. As the group that constructed it and the team, the environmental services group that analyzed it, it seemed to be a failure on multiple levels. So not only the drainage to the catchment system, but the silo itself. When you look at the cost for maintenance, the frequency of maintenance, the frequency needed to clean that system out relative to the benefit, the cost-benefit, it was extremely cost prohibitive.
Councilmember Batiste.
Thanks, Jeff. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so for future facilities, then the systems that go beyond the EFER facilities maintenance standard will be the responsibility of the city, but then it talks about the systems being identified on a site-by-site basis during the design process? So can you just speak a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So as new stations are built, so on a building-by-building basis, as that design and construction or the design process is underway, as it's decided that maybe solar panels will be part of that system or a different heating system will be done, that's where there'll be confirmation between the two parties, us and Eastside Fire and Rescue, what will be the responsibility for maintenance for the Eastside Fire and Rescue and for the city. At the same time, we will also take a look at the savings, you know, if there's anticipated savings from any of those systems, that that's being taken into account by if the city's responsible for providing that maintenance, that that savings is also captured and a benefit for the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a quick question. It's my understanding that the city actually owns all of the fire stations inside the city.
Correct.
So these are city facilities, and as part of the Eastside Fire and Rescue operating agreement, they are responsible for maintaining a certain level of the facility. And what we're doing here in this MOU is to really clearly, there's a question in here, really clearly identifying when things are over and above the standard level of support, that the city, as the owner of that building, will take responsibility for those systems above and beyond the standard.
Yep. That's a great clarification. Yep.
Councilmember Hunt.
Is, and if I understand correctly, that the fire station 72 under the new, so if this memorandum of understanding were finalized and agreed upon, then going forward, facilities that were at this fire station, those would be, those would fall into the category of facilities that the city would have to maintain? Do they go above and beyond?
Even though they go above and beyond, the savings from those facilities are already captured by Eastside, so Eastside's going to remain, they'll be responsible to maintain those.
Those, but so say we built an exactly the same building, but a different building after this, then the city would have to take care of these facilities?
Similar type, these similar type systems? Yes.
And I do the follow-on question to your question, which is, but we would also be in a position to benefit from any cost savings associated with those enhanced systems?
Exactly. We would want that, in that responsibility, we would want that savings to be recognized and captured by the city.
This is a question that's not, I don't know if you know the answer to, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I'm curious. And that really relates to, since this just, this MOU just deals with Esquad, do you know if the other entities that participate in Eastside Fire and Rescue have similar agreements with Eastside Fire and Rescue?
Yes, I believe they do. As we talked with Eastside, yeah. This was a facility standard that they wanted to standardize throughout and with all their city partners. So yes.
Excellent. Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Any comments? Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
Well, I think that buildings such as these, they do have the potential to serve as an example of these sorts of energy-saving and water-saving systems. So while I understand that in this case, that there is a system failure on the, with the one technology, the rain-water catchment system, I guess I would just hope that in the future, they do continue to attempt those systems. I think under the right circumstances or perhaps with a different model, it would be good. And I think that buildings such as this, where they have all of these new technologies, they can serve as a example for the community, for houses in the community that want to adopt these new technologies. And so it's a really big, obvious example of these emerging technologies, which are really important. And I hope that, I hope that they will continue to be that kind of example.
Awesome. Would it make sense to ask Jeff to reach out to our, to Eastside Fire and Rescue Board members and relay that message to them?
I'd be glad to. And also a reminder, as the owner of these facilities, we have a significant role to play in any future design of them. So this would not detract us from our own city goals of being example and building efficiently.
Just a comment, I'm a big supporter of this memorandum because it provides some clarity, and it draws a nice, bright line down. This is what the city is responsible for as, over and above systems. This is what Eastside Fire and Rescue is responsible for as, you know, as part of their operations. And by getting this up front, we have, we can reduce downstream conflict that we don't need. So I think this is a great idea. I think it's the right time to do it, and it's a fair and equitable way to manage the problem. Thanks, Jeff.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. So we've been, the question is to recommend back to the full council to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the memorandum of understanding with Eastside Fire and Rescue so the fire station 72 and future city-owned fire facilities, or fire station 72 and future city-owned fire facilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed 3-0. Consent or regular biz?
I think that could go to consent.
Let's, Councilmember Hunt, you okay with consent? Let's move this to the May 21st consent agenda. I think that there was a good discussion about the value and appropriateness of the memorandum for providing clarity about roles and responsibility for both Eastside Fire and Rescue and responsibilities of the city for the city-owned facilities. All right. Where next?
There are some speakers that are not here yet, so we're going to go with Martha with the information item.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Hi.
Hi. All right. So we're going to move on to Agenda Item E. We're going to get an update from, Martha, you're going to forgive me, right? Sasserosi?
Sasserosi.
I was close. 2019-2020 applications for human services grant funding. Martha, take it away. And thank you for your flexibility.
Oh, yes. I'm glad I was tracking from across the street. Yes. Good evening. So I am here because back in February, staff brought Agenda Bill 7479 to council to set a 2019-2020 human services grant funding target. And at that time, council proceeded with the funding target of $495,000 per year, and staff promised to come back to this committee to share an update following the close of the application period and before the commission prepares its funding recommendations. We wanted to have a touch point in between those two milestones. So this is informational, no committee action is requested this evening. So this is informational, no committee action is requested this evening. But yeah, absolutely an opportunity for some questions and clarification and just information sharing. So I'm going to begin with a probably brief overview, so just since it's been a couple of months of the process and timeline, and then move into the applicants and applications we received in this cycle. So, we have a biannual awards process. Applications are received and reviewed in even years for the subsequent two years. So this process last happened in 2016. It's a 17-city collaboration where we use a shared application process. The commission uses five goal areas to categorize programs. And these are the former goal areas used by United Way of King County. They're currently used by Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond in a similar fashion, just to help organize and categorize like programs. And then the first part of the review process, the commission uses these goal areas just again to help group. And in the second part of the application review process, the commission will look at applications across goal areas. So that's when they kind of fade out and aren't necessarily used as a framework at that point. So also we have, from the 2017 Community Needs Assessment for Health and Equity Wellbeing, we identified a number of service needs. And so those needs were grouped into four buckets. So we have employment and economic stability, which includes things like English for work classes and job coaching and placement, behavioral, medical, and dental health services, particularly affordable services for households with public insurance or no insurance coverage. System navigation to access services and resources, including specialized information and referral services. And then fourth, we have housing stability, which covers a spectrum ranging from emergency shelter and services to connect households to housing, to also supportive services for tenants and financial assistance to prevent evictions and foreclosures. And so, again, these are areas of need identified, kind of coming out of the needs assessment, and also helping to provide some guidance for the commission. And when the, as the commission begins making its preliminary funding recommendations, kind of their, phase one of their process, then they'll go ahead and refine recommendations in part two, they'll be tracking how funding, kind of, we have two buckets, base funding and targeted funding, how that's being allocated. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that a little later in the presentation, but these are the four areas of need that we're, we're talking about. Did you have a question?
Can I, I'm going to ask a question about the connection between the goal areas and the areas of need identified for targeted support. So some of them, pretty clearly, goal areas relate to the targeted support areas. The one that I am not sure how they, how it connects is supportive relationships. And so I just wondered if you could explain where supportive relationship goes into the targeted support areas.
Yes, and so the way we kind of think of layering this is that these areas of, of need, kind of targeted areas, may appear in more than one goal area. So, for example, housing stability, really primarily you're going to see that in the goal area one, which is that roof overhead that really gets that housing. But it also appears in safety from violence and abuse with emergency shelter for households fleeing domestic violence, and also some housing stability programs that are specific to that population. So for system navigation to access services and resources, those types of programs that are more kind of information and referral focused, and really about connecting households to resources in their community, that's going to appear in that supportive relationships one, which is a bit of a broad, broad category. But it's just kind of making an existing framework fit to work how, the, the needs that we're, we're calling out specifically. But system navigation is also one where a number of programs may have a primary focus on housing or health or another service area, but system navigation is actually a really key part of what they do. So again, that one might also appear in programs in other goal areas. And so, the, the commission's role, just to remind folks, is to review applications and make funding recommendations to council. This work this year follows their efforts to make process improvements over the last six months or so, which included incorporated, incorporating findings from the needs assessment, refining application criteria, developing a vision statement, participating in a joint equity training with other Eastside Human Services commissions, and scorecard testing and refinement. And that's a scorecard that's used in just part one of their review process. Which, I've kind of been talking about part one, part two. So part one, just to be clear, is the first read through of all the applications. So all commissioners read all applications. And then four commissioners are assigned to score each application. And we set out a review schedule so that we're focusing on portions of, of goal areas at each of the meetings. And so there's an initial pass in that round one that uses a scorecard and uses the goal areas to group applications. In the second part, we kind of move on for a little bit from the goal areas and from the scorecard, and that's really looking holistically across all the funding recommendations to really see, are there any gaps? Are there kind of imbalances of investment relative to need? And thinking about, okay, how's that base funding and kind of supplemental targeted funding, where's all that falling? And so there, there's kind of two key phases before they'll finalize those recommendations to go on to council. And so then council receives that package of funding recommendations likely in October, and consider them in conjunction with other budget items. And then staff, we just provide support to the commission, any materials that they might need in the process, and then we'll prepare that agenda bill. And so this is that vision statement that I referred to just a moment ago, and our Human Services Commission actually came before Committee of the Whole in January to share this vision statement and kind of the process behind it, but I just wanted to share it once again, in that it came from feedback from the commission members after the last cycle. They were, they were requesting guidance more specific to the granting process beyond what's called out in the human services element of a comprehensive plan. And this is kind of intended to be nested within that human services element vision, which of course falls within the city vision. And so it, it reads, "The Issaquah Human Services Grants Process Values Equity and Inclusion, Promotes Economic Stability, Addresses Underserved Needs, and Demonstrates Impact in Order to Better Support a Sustainable and Healthy Community for All." And so this statement has provided guidance for the commission as it worked on its process improvements for funding deliberations, and will help to ground the work as they enter the review, scoring, and general deliberation process. So here we have a look at milestones for this process. Application opened in March. We participated in two funders workshops, one in, on the east side and one in South County. In March, the commission also participated in that joint equity training with commissions from Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond. And that training provided an introduction to key concepts and considerations for, for commission members to draw from as they review applications in relation to equity, and particularly racial equity. The application closed on April 10th, and so that's when staff began the review and sorting process. Because again, that's an application that's shared by 17 cities. So pulling Issaquah's applications and categorizing them, and reviewing applications for complete content and so forth, and any corrections that are needed. The commission received the application and support materials on the second of this month, and so now we begin their, their process. It'll only eight times in total to complete the review and recommendation process. And as I mentioned, that, that package, an agenda bill should be before council in October and anticipate that contracts would be initiated in January of 2019. So now for the, kind of the key figures that came out of our application process. So, there were 91 applications requesting 1.1 million in human services grant funding. You'll see that's a 58% increase in the amount requested over the prior cycle, and a 21% increase in the number of applications. So we're certainly seeing returning applications, just, you know, requesting more significant investment from the city. You'll see there's a range of zero to 70,400. And then a breakout here of kind of applications by range of requested support. So I just want to note that the city, in its criteria this year, said the minimum funding request is $4,000 to warrant city investment and the work for both the nonprofit and city to manage that contract and reporting. And so two, two applicants submitted applications below that amount, one for $0. So we reached out to both of them to confirm that was not an error. And so, one of the, the organization that requested $0, they're really were saying, we want the city to know that we're providing services to the residents, but not to the level at which they would request funding this cycle. But they wanted to say, you should, you should know we're, we're in your community and, and providing services. So the majority of applications kind of fall in the $4,000 to $15,000 range, and another 17 are requesting greater funding beyond that. Again, with the largest request in for community advocacy services for survivors of domestic violence. So that's the 70,400. Yeah, so a lot to take in there with numbers. I would just also add that 15 of the 91 applications came from 11 organizations who had either never applied to the city of Issaquah before or hadn't applied in the previous cycles. They were coming back to apply for funding. And a bit more about those organizations, so the nine with an asterisk are new applicants for the city. And so the two who had applied in prior rounds are Bellevue College, who applied back in 2012, and the YWCA, who had applied in 2014. But otherwise, these are new. And of these applicants, four were applying for funding for housing services. Three for employment service programs. And four have a system navigation focus or touch. So they're quite responsive to those four areas of need that the city called out. So just to return to that piece about the overall funding target and how that was broken out, and thinking about base funding, which was set at 383,000 per year, is really focusing on support for services that meet basic needs across the lifespan and across the spectrum of human services. And then the 112,000 in targeted funding, really to think of that as supplemental for these four areas where there is really demonstrated need coming out of the Community Needs Assessment work in 2017. And so just to speak a little bit to the applications, we saw that were responsive to that, those four areas of, of need and focus. For employment and economic stability, there were 10 applications, again, whose primary focus, right, was, was in this area, requesting a total of 94,000 in funding. For behavioral, medical, and dental health services, there were 22 applications requesting 286,000. For system navigation, six programs that were focused on, on navigation requesting 54,000. And then again, as I mentioned, there, as we go through the deliberation process, we'll see other programs who may be a, a secondary or additional component of their program model and delivery is, is this navigation piece. And then housing stability is by far the largest, so there were 31 applications requesting 351,000 in funding. So, definitely saw programs responding, again, to those four areas of need that were called out. And just to speak a little bit to how kind of in the review process we'll be thinking about these two numbers. During the process, the commission will be tracking funding recommendations against current funding levels to help distinguish between base funding and targeted support. So the targeted support will be the portion of funding that really is going to targeted areas above and beyond current to represent that increased investment in these four areas. So we'll be, we'll be tracking that for them as they go. And then again, that kind of phase two of the review process will be really deliberate about thinking about this kind of base funding across the spectrum, and then the, the targeted component. And so, that, I just wanted to also kind of close the presentation portion with a look ahead to next steps. So again, the commission received their materials on the second of this month. They'll have their first kind of regular meeting where they are reviewing, and will have scored some applications the 22nd. And they'll be starting off with Goal Area Five, which is around jobs. And they'll also be discussing programs focused on food and material goods. And then on May 30th is when we'll have a joint meeting with the human services commissions from Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and also Samamish, who newly has a human services commission, had been a task force for the last couple of years. So they'll be joining us in that. That meeting will focus on homeless shelters, day centers, outreach, and housing programs. And how the east side cities have been working to build capacity as a subregion, and kind of thinking about coordinated investment somewhat along the lines of the arch model for capital funding for housing. So understanding that there isn't going to be a shelter for families, a shelter for single adults, a shelter for youth and young adults in every city on the east side, but rather, as a subregion, we want to support capacity across, across our cities. And so that takes communication upfront in the process. So we'll bring the commissions together later this month to have that conversation. And then they'll resume their meetings such that they will have recommendations ready for council, and we'll bring them to you in October.
Thanks Martha, great presentation. Councilmember Batiste.
Thank you Martha, that's a great presentation and great overview. So can you go back to the grant applications? Really, really large increase. Do you, do you have some idea where that's coming from? And have, have you talked about that locally and regionally? Where, where that really large increase is coming from?
Yeah, and I'll say, I don't have the, the numbers with me for the other east side cities, but similarly, so I think Redmond was over 2 million in requests this year. And I think they funded just over 1 million last year, or currently. So in Bellevue, similarly significant increases. So I don't know if there's one thing to point to, but I will say that a message that staff have been trying to really get through to organizations in the last few cycles is to really ask for what's needed, so we can help have a better understanding of what that is, since we have such few kind of, or so few data points to really help us understand what, what the need truly is and what the cost of the need is. So we've, we've been pretty consistent in our messaging over the last couple of years to have them ask for what is truly needed to provide services and quality services at the level needed. And then there's also been some outreach to particularly culturally specific organizations, some of whom are, have been around for a long time, but have been largely volunteer run and are just beginning to actually bring on staffing, paid staffing, and build out their programming even more, and apply for city funding, right, because that's not an easy thing to do, to apply for public funding. And so we're starting to see some of those organizations apply. So, for example, India Association of Western Washington, Muslim Community and Neighborhood Association, and Muslim Community Resource Center, and three new applicants for us in some other cities as well.
So it sounds like part of this has been outreach to those groups. And then when you were talking earlier about asking for exactly what the need is, was that a change in the, in the actual grant application? Was there more specific information put in?
We did in the, so each city provides kind of supplemental information that's specific to that city, since the application document or questions themselves are generic to the, to all 17 cities. So the commission did for Issaquah supplement, say, you know, ask for what you need, and also taking into consideration that this is public funding. And so there are several factors really to weigh and take into consideration as you're requesting your funding. requesting your funding, but very much to focus on what the true level of need is. But of course, the other things to consider are, well, what's your agency capacity? Because let's say you've got $1 million, you wouldn't necessarily be able to actually implement the use of those dollars, right, immediately in an effective way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
I have a few questions. One, equity trainings. I wondered if those are open to, so commission meetings are open to the public. I wondered if the equity trainings are also open to the public?
So whenever we have a quorum of our commission members, they are open. So these trainings, we were actually spread out over several sessions. So, and they happen to be hosted in Kirkland and Redmond. But so those particular ones were not generally, yeah, whenever we have a quorum, that's open to the public. But the resources associated with that training, the PowerPoint, are available and accessible.
Yeah, I just thought that might be a good resource, if there was a way to maybe summarize it for the public, just so that the people that are interested but not on the commission could hear about what equity training entails. I see that there are a number of organizations that definitely work in Issaquah and also in other areas. In the funding, how does that work? Do you just look at what they do in Issaquah, or you look at what they do as a whole organization?
Yeah, so generally, the commission's looking at access. And so any one program, you know, some, like King County 211 Information and Referral Service, generally accessed online or by phone. So in that instance, site location is not such a factor, but with other programs, part of the application is to identify service locations. So the commission can see, okay, where are these facilities or programs located? Another part of the application asks about access via transportation, cost, other elements of access, so that the commission can have an understanding of, you know, for our residents, how are they able to access the programs and what's the organization doing to make that easier? And then with the program output, so thinking about maybe hours of counseling, meals provided, we'll see how many outputs were provided to Issaquah residents specifically. And we'll also see the unduplicated number of Issaquah residents who are served by that program each year.
And then, you did explain this, but I'm still struggling a little bit to understand the allocation of grant funding based on the different needs. So there's the targeted and the base. And then do you have percentages of the targeted allocation that you're looking to address the different needs with, or are you looking more at what the request came in and the 26% were health, and so you're looking to allocate based on that?
We made an estimate as a part of this $112,000 figure, understanding that that was largely based on what we had received in the way of applications in the last cycle within those four areas that were identified in the needs assessment, and understanding that that's a limited kind of data point. And so definitely an estimate to start with, and then we also want to balance that with being responsive to what was received in these applications. So there is a starting point. So for example, of that 112,000, I think about somewhere between 30 and 40% was anticipated to likely go to supplementing resources for housing stability, and understanding that that was a significant and costly need to address. So it is not evenly, you know, 25%, 25%, so on.
Right, but there's parameters around how much you expect to allocate to different targets. And then do you report back on, at the end of the year, that how close you were to those targets? Or how do you, they're not, it sounds like they're kind of guidelines, right?
Yes, yes, soft guidelines. And that's for the targeted specifically. So we don't set targets or restrictions for how the base funding is allocated. What we've done historically, or at least in the last cycle, was to have a grounding in current funding and to understand how much the proposed recommendations may deviate from that amount and not wanting to deviate significantly from our current investments, such that we would be reducing funding in any area.
Okay, and the base funding is, covers, it also covers the goal areas that are in the targeted funding. There's a big overlap, is that right?
Yes, because the 112 was really intended to be supplemental, so really building on what is supported in that base funding.
Just a couple of questions. Are we still the grants primarily capacity-building grants so that?
Oh, these are for direct services.
These are direct services.
Yes, so these are entirely distinct from the community fund capacity-building grants. So these are, you know, with these dollars, we anticipate that you're providing X number of dental visits.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And are we going to be making partial grants? So if someone asks for $25,000 and we do the math and we say, we don't really, we think this is a good idea, but we're going to give you 15, are we taking that approach possibly?
The majority of the grant recommendations are for a partial award.
Okay. And then finally, I think you mentioned this, but do we provide assistance to these organizations to help them fill out their grant applications?
So, yeah, so, well, so fill out, I'm not sure, but, so we participate in the funders' workshops to provide guidance, and then staff, which is largely me, I was available. So I met or spoke with 28 of the applicants during that application period to provide clarification, feedback, if they had a section of the application that they needed some response on, some guidance, especially for our first-time applicants.
Do you ever find the applicants interested in getting feedback and, you know, from us on why we didn't fund them or why we didn't fund them at the level that they wanted to?
Yes, yes. And so that's, you know, some of the conversations was, well, we applied the last cycle, we weren't funded, or we requested, you know, this amount, but we got, you know, 50% of what we requested. What can we do to be, you know, more successful this round? Yeah, we definitely get those questions.
Any other questions? Councilmember Batiste.
So Martha, could you remind the committee with the targeted allocation and the community needs assessment, that's relatively new, the needs assessment. Could you correct?
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit to that, speak to that?
Yes, so in the prior, so in 2016, when we were setting a funding target, we had pretty limited information to work with. And really, when we first set about this kind of process of base funding and reaching that $10 per capita goal and understanding that that's a kind of foundational level of support, we also wanted to recognize that we had had a number of kind of out-of-cycle requests to address emergent need around shelters and serving folks experiencing homelessness. And so that was kind of the data or information we had available to think about, well, how can we maybe better anticipate and build in that support for that, right, greater area of need? So that's initially how we had set funded, targeted funding, excuse me, in the prior cycle. And so that was just at 31,500, right? And so then, this time around, we have the needs assessment, and so we can understand, okay, well, as one would anticipate, housing stability, homelessness, is one of the four major areas to come out of that. But now we also see these three other areas of service needs that we can then take, look back at prior applications, understand, well, what might that look like in terms of funding requests that we could anticipate receiving? And kind of use those two data points to have a stronger understanding of what those targeted allocations should look like.
Councilmember Hunt.
This follows on Councilmember Ray's question, but when, at the end of this process, for those individuals that, whether they received funding or not, do you provide the reasoning for them? Or do they have to kind of come to you and say, like, why didn't we get?
Yes, they are welcome to follow up with us, but yes, it's not provided upfront.
Okay.
Councilmember Batiste.
So Martha, in regard to the groups that maybe had applied in the past and weren't funded as this has continued to grow, but they weren't funded last year, did you see those groups return? Or do you have anyone who, a group that didn't return?
You know.
You might not know the answer to that, but I was just curious.
I think of the ones that come to mind, that most did. But I think there might be a couple that didn't.
But then they would have the availability to reach out for help, saying, we weren't funded in the last cycle, and we're wondering, you know, to your point earlier, we're wondering what we could have done. They could reach out to you for help.
Yes, though I, they might have all come back, because again, with that increase to 91 applications, I think, I think they all returned.
Anything else? Great, thanks, Martha. Great update. All right, we're right on schedule. All right, so next up is Agenda Bill 7596, a property tax reduction request via the King County Public Benefits Rating System, and David Faver is presenting. Oh, and Bill Bernstein.
Yes, hi.
Hi, welcome.
I'll kick it off and then turn it over to Bill here. First, I'm going to find. Thanks, Teresa. All right, all right. So this is, yeah, all right. So this is a request for property tax reduction through a program, King County program, called the Public Benefit Rating System, for a single-family home up at 350 Mount Jupiter Drive on Squawk This is a program that, I'll turn it over to Bill in a minute, that, a King County program that incentivizes preservation of certain public benefits. And one of them is homes or properties with a historic landmark designation, which is this home. So it requires kind of a two-step process, a local government approval by the council, and then secondly, King County council approval through the county public hearing process. And so tonight's an introduction to you all, and then it's proposed that we schedule a public hearing May 21st. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill to kind of take it through the program and the property.
And then just scroll through your slides.
Just hit the mouse or, there, and just change it.
Got it.
There and here.
Got it, okay. Well, thanks for having me. So I was just going to spend a couple minutes just on what current use taxation is. And essentially, they are, it's a state-mandated set of programs that every county in Washington State must implement. And it's based off of state law that was established back in the early 1970s with the idea that, given the growth of the state, particularly in counties such as King County, the idea was that the state needed, wanted to find ways to incentivize protection of open space resources throughout the various counties. And so in the early '70s, through the RCW and WAC notations that you see here, the current use taxation was established and essentially exists in a set of four programs, one of them being open space. Open space is a generic classification in terms of the four designations. And what I mean by that is RCW language gives counties the option to establish a PBRS open space program, which is basically a little bit more in-depth in terms of how individual counties can determine what resources are valuable to their particular jurisdiction. And so in 1992, King County adopted their own PBRS program and established the criteria for property qualification. And so PBRS open space is essentially a point-based system where properties qualify for a property tax reduction based on how well they score in that point system. And so there's about 25 different categories in King County's PBRS open space program. One of those categories happens to be historic landmark properties that have been designated. So the program, for the most part, tends to be about open space, forest, farm, that sort of thing. But the county also decided to recognize the importance of historic landmarks as well. And so there is a category that offers qualification for PBRS if you have such designation. So in this case, this is a pretty straightforward enrollment in our minds. Again, we're talking about one category here. This is a small property off of Mount Jupiter Road that has been designated as a historic landmark based on the character and historic value of the property itself and its landscape as well. And so we have the owners here, who I'm sure would like to speak potentially about things that I may not cover perhaps. But essentially, that, the quality of the home was determined based, or the designation of the home was determined based on its historic character in terms of the architect associated with constructing the home. And then it has a very unique kind of historical Cold War aspect to it, where there's a very interesting bunker in the home that's quite unique and rare. And so a combination of the architect involved and the history of kind of the feel of the home, as well as that kind of Cold War bunker portion associated as well, kind of gathered the interest from the county and the Issaquah Landmark Commission to go ahead and designate this property. Was there another slide?
Last slide.
Yeah, there we go. So we talked a little bit about this. Hopefully, you have had a chance to look at some of the materials that were included in the agenda packet, my staff report, there's a map that's attached to that that kind of just shows the lay of the property. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the property or how current use taxation works in general. But again, what we're talking about here is, as a result of this property being enrolled, we are reducing the land value of the property by a certain portion or percentage based on how it scores in the open space program. So that results in a reduction in the land value and establishes what we call a current use value on the property. So the taxes associated with the land portion of the property are therefore reduced by this rating, this point total, which is five, which ends up being a 50% reduction in land value for the portion of property enrolled. So I'll leave it there. I'm happy to answer any questions. And with the landowners here, I'm sure they can give more detail about the property's designation as well.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you for that explanation, and I have learned now about this public benefit rating system, so thank you for that. I wondered if you could explain a little bit about the, once a property or land is designated as landmark, what specific requirements the property owners would have to do in terms of, there's a bunker and maintaining that, and what condition and those sorts of requirements for landmarks?
So the landmark designation that's recorded with the county kind of lays out the specific requirements of what the landowner is required to do. And essentially, in short, they really can't do a whole lot. The character and the integrity of the structure itself and the grounds has to be maintained based upon what's established in that landmark agreement. So I believe that any kind of alteration that you may want to do to the property has to be approved by the landmark staff and our county historic preservation office. But I understand that the, pretty restrictive in what you can and can't do to the home that would potentially impact any of that kind of historical component of the property. And for us administering PBRS, as long as they are in compliance with the historic landmark agreement, that's what we need to see in order to continue the PBRS open space designation.
Is there any question? Councilmember Hunt? Oh, Councilmember Batiste.
No, go ahead.
This is one quick one, and then I'll pass over to Councilmember Batiste. The time-sensitive action prior to July 1st, could you explain why? action prior to July 1st, could you explain why this is... I'm just wondering why July 1st?
Sure. So in the state RCW laws, there is a required six-month approval window for when an application is received, to the point as far as when it has to be approved by both legislative bodies. So typically, we have city action first, and then we take it to our county public hearing as well. So in terms of timeline, we receive the application late December, and that gives us that six-month clock, so to speak, to get approval on both ends, both city and county.
Yes, thank you. So in regard to, if this were approved, and in regard to the taxes going forward, is this something where there is a period of time, and then there's a check-in period? Or is it just going forward from here on out?
Right. So there is no end date to a property's enrollment. And, you know, the only reason a property would be removed, or the open space agreement would be terminated, would be a voluntary withdrawal notification from the owners, or if there was a compliance concern that we couldn't rectify, and we had to remove a property from the program. But in terms of tax savings, that continues on as long as an owner wants to participate. In this case, in terms of timeline, they applied in 2017, they're going through the approval process in 2018, their first year of tax savings is 2019. And then from 2019 forward, every year they will see that level of tax savings until at some point, if ever, they decide they want to come out, or if somebody who owns the property after they do decides they want to come out. But there is no end date to the program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we'll take public comments. So if the Millers would like to say anything, we'd love to hear about your house. It sounds fascinating.
I didn't anticipate this, but, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Yeah, if you just want to state your name, just so we've got it...
My name is Mark Miller. I live at 350 Mount Jupiter Drive Southwest in Issaquah. Our house is a mid-century modern style, which has recently been recognized as eligible for landmarking. It is an Eichler-designed home, which means that there's certain aspects of that particular architect that it has. It's a post-and-beam construction. Every beam is held up by three posts. The entire back of the home is glass, for the most part. So it is an unusual style of home. And it does have a bomb shelter, as he mentioned. We don't use it for that. It's just a big storeroom right now. But it has its own water heater, so there's a water supply in it. It has electricity in it. It has a serpentine entrance, you know, from the Cold War. The house was built where it is by the owner, who lives in Squim now, William Conrady. He was the builder, along with Skip Rowley, who was the developer. But the home was built where it is because this gentleman, Mr. Conrady, worked for the Atomic Energy Commission with the General Accounting Office area. And he was well aware, back, this is in the 60s, '62, his concern, he felt that if there was ever an attack in the Northwest, it would come on Fort Lewis and McCord Air Force Base. So this house is built with the mountain in between where it sits and Louis McCord, all right, so that it would have that protection. So he was very... He lived in Japan for a long time, and then he lived in Bellevue, correct? And he had an Eichler home there as well. And so he took a lot of what he had seen in Japan, and Eichler was influenced by that, and took what he saw in Bellevue, and he built this house. And, you know, he's correcting that we're not able to, you know, we can do cosmetic things. I can put in, we put in double-pane windows instead of single-pane, all right, something like that. We have some skylights. But we did nothing that changed the architecture of the home. So we couldn't put a peaked roof on it, for example, instead of the semi-flat roof that it has. You know, the nature and the character of the house must be retained. And so, which we want to do. I mean, it's, from what I've gathered, a lot of the mid-century modern homes have been remodeled quite a bit. And so, you know, this one hasn't. And so we're, we just feel real fortunate to have it, and went through a very lengthy process. It's taken years to get to this point. But is there anything that I... Do you have questions?
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you. That was fascinating.
Thank you.
Any comments from the committee? Councilmember Hunt?
I have a question, I think, for the... In terms of this designation and the tax status, if the home were to be sold, does that transfer to the next owner?
Yep, there are continuance documents that get signed at the time of sale. And so typically, gosh, I would say 95% of the time, a buyer would elect to continue in the open space classification. And if they chose not to, then that's where the issue of compensating tax, back tax bill would come into play for a property's removal.
Anything else? All right. So question is, to recommend to the full council to approve, a resolution approving the Public Benefit Rating System classification of the Miller property at 350 Mount Juniper Drive Southwest. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that carries 3-0. We're gonna have a public hearing on the 21st to talk about this, so it'll go to regular business? Regular business. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Miller, for coming in. That was fascinating. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Right, we're adjourned. Any outstanding questions?